Welcome to the Barville School Committee of May 13, 2025, 6:00 PM, at the Barville High School Media Center, 425 East Avenue, Harrisville, Rhode Island. Roll call, everybody is present? Except for Victor, who has an excused absence. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, welcome, everybody. What a crowd. We've never had a crowd this big before. So I'm going to start off with Agenda Item Number Two, Recognition. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Salito, and he'll explain how this is going to take place.
Thank you, Chairwoman Lacy. So, welcome, everyone. Obviously, tonight, we have some commendations and citations that we're giving out to our incredibly talented musicians, student musicians, all levels, our elementary, middle, and high school. So we just wanted to take a few minutes out of our meeting to congratulate you all on the distinction that you've earned from Remya. All-State Distinction Elementary All-State Chorus, we have Junior All-State Orchestra, Junior All-State Band, we have Junior All-State Guitar Ensemble, Senior All-State Band, and Senior All-State Guitar Ensemble. So I'm going to read one of the citations, and then Chair Lacy is going to go to the podium. We'll call names up. If you are here, please come up and receive your citation, and then remain standing. There'll be a group picture and some photo ops shortly after that. So the citations read, is our official citation from the Barville School Department. "Be hereby known to all that the Barville School Department offers its sincerest congratulations and best wishes to..." Insert name here. "In recognition for being selected for the Rhode Island Music Education Association's, in this case, Elementary All-State Chorus, the Barville School Department salutes you on this tremendous accomplishment. Go Broncos, given this 13th day of May 2025." So again, congratulations to all. We certainly realize, as a committee and a school department, how much work is behind this from our students, student musicians, and our teachers and parents, of course, for your support. And it's great to see such a big crowd here of our musicians.
And this is what we commonly like to call the best part of being on the school committee. I think every school member, every school committee member will agree with me.
So we have quite a list. I will, I'll start, I'll read the list, and when you hear your name, please come up and receive your citation, and then remain standing behind the podium, and we'll have some photo ops. And I'll apologize in advance if there's anyone we left off the list. We triple-checked this and quadruple-checked this, but as Murphy's Law is, if there's someone whose name was left off the list, please come on up at the end and take a picture, and let us know, and we'll make sure you get the citation as well. I hope we didn't forget anyone, but wanted to make that disclaimer, just in case. So we're going to start with our Elementary All-State Chorus selections. Genevieve Colantonio. Nora Dupont. Sophia Griffin. William Lawrence. Brooke McVay. Harrison McVay. Anne Belinda Raspolo. Joseph Switzer. Aubrey Tousanier. And Alexis Vasquez. It's the Elementary All-State Chorus. Let's give that my hand. Next, we have our Junior All-State Orchestra selections. Mason Cabral. Benjamin Elliott. And Chloe Parfum. Again, Junior All-State Orchestra. And recipients for Junior All-State Band, Kaden Mulligan. Kaylee Perez. Hannah St. Pierre.
Congratulations.
And William Trink. Ladies and gentlemen, our Junior All-State Band recipients. And for Junior All-State Guitar Ensemble, Garrett Bedrow. Lydia Farah. Jack Latondres.
Congratulations.
William Latondres III. And Benjamin Reifler. Let's give a hand to our Junior All-State Guitar Ensemble. Next, we have one member of our Senior All-State Band, that's Emily Cook.
Congratulations.
And our last category, our Senior All-State Guitar Ensemble, Gabrielle Boudreaux.
Congratulations.
And Christopher Fafford. Senior All-State Guitar Ensemble. Congratulations to all our Rhode Island Music Education Association All-State selections, elementary, junior, and senior recipients. Special shout-out to Mr. Latondres, being here, Mr. Latondres, for all your hard work, dedication. Congratulations, everyone. So we realize that there is a high school concert tonight that started just about now, but we've got a thrilling meeting of consent agendas, and bids, and warrants, and things like that. If you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome, but we certainly understand if you're here for the recognition and want to leave, you may do that as well.
The bar and pop. That was a fun pop. Good everybody, okay. Okay, so moving on. Agenda Item Number Three, Consent Agenda. Approval of Minutes.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, sorry, April 8, 2025.
Motion made by Donison, seconded by Sean. All in favor?
Aye.
Warrants and invoices.
So, Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2425 warrant number 10, month of April, dated May 13, 2025. Total will be approved $1,291,158.51, but a grand total expenditure of $2,974,951.72.
Make a second. I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have one bid tonight. It is for the purchase of an audio sound system from the Barville Middle School.
Motion to approve the bid for $143,644.37 to ATR Treehouse.
Motion made by Dave, seconded by Sean. All in favor?
Aye.
So, moving on, Agenda Item Number Four, Presentation by the Public to the School Committee. Do we have anyone?
We have no presentation scheduled tonight.
Okay. Agenda Item Number Five, Public Comment. Doesn't look like we have anybody here for that. So Agenda Item Number Six, Personnel, Leaves of Absence, Retirements, Resignations, and Appointments.
So, Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve great, tremendous thanks and well wishes to Kathryn Lord, Principal of Barville Middle School, effective June 30, 2025.
I'll second it with regret.
Motion made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with many thanks.
Yes, with many, many thanks, and wish her well, all the best, and... Yep, yep. Okay.
And, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to receive and file the subsequent appointments as presented.
Okay, motion made by Donison, seconded by Jill. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, Agenda Item Number Seven, Old Business. Fiscal Year 25, Barville School District Budget Update.
Madam Chair, I'm making a motion to receive and file.
Motion made by Donison, seconded by Jill. All in favor?
Aye.
Fiscal Year 25, Rink Budget Update.
I'm making a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And Policy 4320 Purchasing, Second Revised Reading.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the second revised reading for Policy P4320, related to budget and finance.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia. All in favor?
Aye.
Policy Number 7314, School Wellness, Second Revised Reading.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, again, to approve Policy P7314, the school wellness policy.
Motion made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia. All in favor? I'm sorry, seconded by Jill. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now we're moving on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of items to report tonight. I'm going to start with an update on our decennial visit from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, or NIASC. It was held last week here at the high school. That's a 10-year visit, so every 10 years, the accreditation, in the accreditation process, NIASC comes out and does a formal visit. It's a very intensive, three-day visit. They shadow students, they meet with teachers, they meet with parents, they meet with school committee members, as you know, administrators, and they do a pretty deep dive into everything that's happening at the high school. And then they will submit a report, a follow-up report, to the steering committee from NIASC, and then it goes public after that with their findings. They'll have recommendations and commendations and things like that. By all accounts, the visit went very well. We're now awaiting the committee's report, and I just wanted to thank the high school faculty and staff, and in particular, the steering committee, for all their hard work. That 10-year cycle is something that's ongoing. Behind the scenes, it happens. I mean, work for the next response to the report will happen at the end of this year, and then we'll go right through to next year. So there's certain deadlines that you have to hit throughout the 10-year process, that the school leadership and that the school faculty has been involved in for the past decade, and it culminates in that, in that event. So there's two-year follow-up reports, and five-year reports, and self-studies, and things like that. So, very intensive process. I'm sure it's a relief that the visit is over and went well, and we anxiously await to the report. Once we have that in, it'll be presented publicly at a future school committee meeting, so I'll keep you posted on that.
Do we have any idea when they'll get back to us? Any timeframe?
Yeah, it probably would be before the end of the school year.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it's pretty quick. They did hold a meeting, the visiting committee held an informal meeting with the faculty to give them some feedback on what they saw and what their expected findings are going to be. They didn't, they don't, I don't think they anticipate any major findings or recommendations, and did mention a lot of commendations, a lot of great things that they saw in the building. So look forward to that. Next, as you know, under resignation at tonight's meeting was the resignation of our middle school principal, Mrs. Lord. Just wanted to, as so many school committee members said, just wanted to take a minute to thank her for her dedication and service over the past several years at the helm at the middle school. She'll be greatly missed, but we certainly wish her all the best, understand, understanding that the time is right with family responsibilities and some other things for that decision. So, a position will be posted publicly tomorrow. We're hoping that we have lots of highly qualified candidates, and then we'll start the interview process, putting the committee together, and kind of going from there. And aligned with that is the ongoing search for Callahan Principal for next year. That is happening right now. It's actually, interviews being held as we speak over at the central office. Mrs. May is spearheading that effort with about 12 other folks from Callahan, some parents and some teachers. They're interviewing folks today, and then, I believe, Thursday. So we have about eight people that are being interviewed, and then we'll go on to the second stage for that interview process, and then we'll start over with the beginning stages with the middle, the middle school one. So, best of luck to Mrs. Lord, wish her the best. She will be missed, for sure. A couple of other things. Under New Business tonight is a discussion of a mirror resolution. It's one that was passed by the North Smithfield School Committee. In short, the resolution supports a bill that is calling for the increase in the size of passenger vans that can be used for student transportation, and allows flexibility and driver certification for bus drivers. Both of those bills are aimed at reducing the overall cost of transportation and increasing the number of qualified drivers. The bill about the drivers has to do with out-of-state certification being honored by Rhode Island. So right now, if there's a driver, say, in Connecticut, who is a certified bus driver and wants to drive a bus here in Rhode Island, they have to be certified. It's costly for them. Typically, they pay out of pocket, I believe, until they get hired by a company, and it's time-consuming, and it's pretty much the same certification. So they're looking to really provide almost like a reciprocal certification with other drivers, and that would allow companies like DATCO, which is home-based in Connecticut, has a lot of drivers that are servicing routes in Connecticut, could be used over in Rhode Island without having to wait and without having any cost to the driver.
And I just want to add, just so you know, too, that's what they did during COVID. They, the governor waived that. Yeah, so hopefully, they'll, they'll make it permanent, because it is very helpful.
So that's, yeah, that is under New Business to discuss and consider a mirror resolution for both of those two transportation issues. And then finally, we received, the school committee and myself received a parent email earlier this week with a number of questions, questions focused mainly on budget, transportation, and student support services. As committee knows, for their informational purposes, I responded on behalf of the district, and will include the questions in my responses as an attachment to my report tonight, so that it will be included in the meeting minutes. So in the future, meeting minutes come out in June and are approved, they will have my response to the, to that parent email in there as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Salito. Okay, moving on. Agenda Item Number Nine, which is the Administrator's Report, which will be deferred until the June meeting. So that brings us to Agenda Item Number 10, Report from School Committee Student Representative. All set? Okay. Well, that's, that's a good sign. Everything must be going good at the high school, then. Perfect. Agenda Item Number 11, Reports of School Committee Subcommittee's. Does anybody have anything?
I do. BEC met last Tuesday. I'll get you the meeting minutes when I've got them. Just a few highlights. They have their summer program that's kicking off. They bring the kids out to Spring Lake. They have actually 207 kids that have signed up for it, representing over 100 families. They said they have plenty of staff. They're actually, they said 30 applicants for positions to fill, so they don't expect any issues there with the summer program. Their numbers are good. They're showing, they're in the black, 17,000 profit year-to-date, and their reserves are strong, so they're in good shape. So they're able to keep the rates the same for next year's incoming children. So, that was that.
Anybody else? Okay, well, I just have a couple of things here. BPAC held a meeting on May 7. It was the first meeting that Michelle Gerard headed as our new BPAC coordinator. Very nice woman. If you get a chance to meet her, I highly recommend it. She's... I don't, I don't know if we reported this out last month, but we received a $25,000 grant from the BHDDH grant, so that grant is going to be used for the post-grad party, and we're trying to, we're hoping to get Chris Heron to come in and speak in the floor. Chris Heron, if anybody's not familiar with him, he was a former NBA player that got addicted to heroin. And Dr. Salito had told me about this gentleman before, and if you want to hear about it, it's really interesting. ESPN has a 30 for 30 series. I don't know if you've ever seen that, but it's called Unguarded. And so now what he does is he goes to schools, and he talks to the kids about addiction and drugs, and so hopefully, we can get him to come here. That, I think that would be great. And, what else? The youth of the BPAC youth report out that the mock crash was very successful, so another two years of success for that. That's always interesting. And again, I urge you, if you ever get a chance to come see it, it's something to see. They do a great job with it. And Veterans of Fear has reported out that their annual Memorial Day remembrance ceremony will be at Freedom Park on May 26. So, the other thing, a couple of quick things I want to mention. I went to the Rhode Island Association of School Committee meeting. On behalf of the Barville School Committee, I want to congratulate Mario Coreno. Am I saying his last name right? Mario Coreno. He received the Howard K. Award for 2025. Mario is the COO at Ride and a member of the Lincoln School Committee, so congratulations to Mario.
You may, sorry to interrupt, Terry. You may remember Mario. He is in charge of the school building authorities. He's presented several times to town councils, school committees. One of the folks at Ride is very responsive when we ask questions. Has always been very good with us, and just great to work with, so congratulations to him.
And last but not least, one of the topics that they covered was addressing the student, the decline in student enrollment. And honestly, I'm happy to report that Barville, everything that they suggested to do, we're already doing it, you know, our CTE programs, you know, our building, updating our building, all things like that. One of the things they had talked about was try to be a little more unique with your CTE program, so... But honestly, everything they talked about, in my head, I'm thinking, well, we're doing that, we're doing that, we're doing it. So, so that's a good thing. We're up to date with everything, and we're doing everything we can to try to retain our kids and hopefully bring in other kids and not lose the kids to charter schools. So, that's about it. I mean, they did discuss a little bit. They touched on the transportation, which every school district is in the same boat, the transportation, the cost of transportation. One thing I do want to say, though, one of the school committee members I was sitting with did mention that she came up to our showcase in, was it March?
I think it was April.
Was it April? She came up, and she said how nicely, how nice the presentation was, and she was really impressed with it, so a little kudos to Barville School District. So, and that's about it. Interesting meeting, and that's about it. All right, anybody have anything else? Okay, moving on. Let's see. Agenda Item Number 12, Correspondence Communications. Assistuate School Committee Funding for Private School Transportation Resolution.
I'm making a motion to receive and file.
Motion made by Donison, seconded by Jill. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the North Smithfield School Committee School Transportation Resolution.
I make a motion to receive and file.
Motion made by Sylvia, seconded by Jill. All in favor?
Aye.
Again, as you can see, everybody's in the same boat with transportation, so... Moving on, Agenda Item Number 13, New Business, Homeschool Applications.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Motion made by Donison, seconded by Jill. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and Vote on the Price Increase of School Meals. I believe it increased 10 cents. Any discussion?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion Vote, Skills USA Overnight Field Trip Request Going to Atlanta, Georgia. Okay, motion made by Jill, seconded by Sean. All in favor?
Aye.
And Discussion Vote, Mirror Resolution for School Transportation.
So this is the North Smithfield Resolution that we just received and filed, put it on under New Business for today's meeting to see if the committee wanted to file a mirror resolution. Again, the two items to note in that resolution is the request to move passenger vans, which is currently set at eight, eight-person vans, up to 10, and then to relax the regulations for certification for out-of-state drivers.
Personally, I think it would benefit Barville as we, we're contracted with DATCO, and DATCO is out of Connecticut, and they can pull drivers from Connecticut to assist. I mean, right now, we had to lose our...
Late bus.
Late bus, so personally, I think it's a great idea.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Shouldn't have kept my, I shouldn't have kept my hair in a zit.
Sylvia used to sit over here.
Seconded by Jill. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, Agenda Item Number 14, Committee Comments on Agenda Items. Anybody have anything?
Okay, I do have a question.
Okay.
The mirror resolution, are we going, that doesn't mean we're going to be creating it and sending it on, right?
Correct.
Okay. And the school committee will create it, or?
It will mirror the same resolution that North... It will mirror the same resolution that North Smithfield had. We'll just take out North Smithfield, put in Barville, and then Terry will sign it as the chair. It goes out to all school committees in the state. It goes out to all town councils in the state and to the general assembly as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Agenda item number 15, pending issues, artificial field update.
If I can give you a brief update on the artificial field here at the high school. As we're all aware, the planning board voted a couple of weeks ago now to stop the construction. I guess they didn't approve the application, I guess is the proper way to say that. So the application was not approved. That was presented to the planning board. And the town council met an executive session last week to discuss next steps, and I believe they are looking at some legal action or resubmission to the planning board, one or the other for next steps on that. So at this point, everything is up in the air until we get some more clarity on that.
Do you want to ask a question? The information that I got was that it doesn't need approval by the planning board. And do we know what went on as far as how does the planning board, how did they decide? You were, you were going to write that letter, right?
To get clarity, to get clarity on why it was denied.
Yeah. Are we still going to?
I don't have any information on why the planning board denied the application, no.
Okay. And I wondered why it wouldn't be going to the planning board. Do we have information on that?
It did go to the planning board.
But it wasn't, it wasn't, the information I got was it didn't have to go to the planning board.
I think the original thought was that it didn't have to go to the planning board because it was a field that was being placed over an existing field. And then I would assume, under the legal proceedings that happened with the restraining order in the court proceedings, that they probably had to go to the planning board after that. That's my, my understanding of it. So they did go to the planning board after the judge released the, lifted the restraining order, and the planning board denied the application. I don't know if any reason was given for, for the denial formally.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving on, space needs committee update.
So the space needs committee is yet to meet. We do have the feasibility study that went out to bid, and the low bid was around $75,000. That'll be presented to the town council at their, at a June meeting. We wanted to wait until, originally, we were going to present in May, but we wanted to wait until we have a little more clarity on budget, the budget process for the upcoming year, before we discuss the feasibility study and what that cost would be, and if it can be funded, and how it's going to be funded, and those kind of things. So we pushed that back till the June meeting.
Oh, so, because I did see it on the agenda for tomorrow night's meeting. I did see that it's listed as discussion or vote for.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not sure if I should ask you, or
I can look into that with, with the town clerk, too.
If so, I would like to go and
Sure.
And advocate for, you know, whatever they can do. So maybe that's going to be tabled?
Yeah, my, my understanding was that it would be presented at the June meeting because of, for budgetary reasons, so we have a better idea of what the current budget is and what the FY '26 budget looks like.
Gotcha.
Because that will impact funding.
Maybe we can clarify that tomorrow before the meeting.
Yeah, because I'll go, I'll go with you, Donison.
Yeah, I'll go if it's going to be
I will check for a thing in the morning.
Perfect.
I do have a comment.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I do have a comment. When the lines between the two elementary schools was, was made, there was a space needs committee, or there was a, space needs was looked at. And I wondered how that was done, and I wonder if we could maybe do it the same way, and maybe do it for less money. I'm not even sure how it was done. I do, it was under Dr. Palata.
That was an entirely different process. They weren't looking at buildings. I mean, they probably looked at some buildings, but it probably was strictly enrollment, and then, you know, property lines and things like that. But I don't think they were looking at facilities across the entire district. The other, the other issue with why this comes in is so pricey, is that in order for you to qualify for reimbursement, if you do any kind of renovation or construction, you have to have your project certified by an architect and engineer. So if we did a study and we just looked at buildings and had a committee, and they came up with suggestions, would be fine, but if we ever were going to do any construction or any renovation, which is most likely, then we would have to go back and hire an architect and engineer, and they would have to sign off on it and do a structural study and those kind of things. And then we'd have to, you know, we'd be waiting, and we'd be paying the same fee anyway. So in order to qualify for reimbursement, we really have to go through an architect and engineer.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Salito, so is that reimbursable, the space needs?
If you end up doing a renovation project or a construction, if they come back, then it would, you would, we would get, right now, we're at 48%.
40% of the $75 back.
Correct.
Is it typically funded by the school district, or is the town going to kick in a little? Because obviously it benefits them, or I'm not familiar with it.
Yeah, it would typically be funded by the town.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So if it is tomorrow night, and anybody wants to show up, and
I'll let you know. I don't think it is. I think it'll probably table it, but I'll double-check.
Okay.
That's what I was wondering. It is on the agenda.
Okay, all right.
Oh, so I missed, perhaps, misread. Oh, wrong item.
Capital Improvement Plan, that's the roof project at Callahan.
Yeah, June, June's another, June's another month. All right, anything else? Agenda item number 16, adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Sylvia, seconded by Dave. All in favor? All right, thank you, everyone.